Good evening. It is Tuesday, January 14th. This is the Finance and Operations Committee of the Board of Education. We're in the Nashville High School North Boardroom. It is now 6:35. And I will call the roll. Mrs. Oden is here. Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Mr. Donovan is with us, and there are no other attendees. So, Mr. Donovan, you're up.
Okay. We have a light agenda tonight to start the year off. My guess is February will be a lot busier than this. But first of the year, we don't have too many items. But the first item is copier usage. We have a company, SPC, that we work with to purchase our copiers and to maintain them. Each year, they give us a report, and we'll go through it quickly. The sheets, that's the first item in your package. And you can get a good sense. So, we have a lot of data on our copying. So, why don't we just dig right in and take a look? So, the first item is a graph, and it shows the -- we're basically going to break this out into black and white and color copying. Main reason for that is the cost. The average cost in our contract for a color copy is about five cents. The average cost for a black and white copy is about a third of one cent. So, it's a big difference. So, you can see the annual black volume. It stayed fairly steady based on the graph. There was a 2% increase this year in black copies, which I don't think is too troubling. And the '15-'16, that's when we just got started, so they didn't have the full data. So, we really didn't jump up in '16-'17. When you flip that page over, you'll see the annual black volume by location. So, as you might expect, you can see the graphs for the two high schools. The number of copies is much higher there. And then if you sort of take a look down and say, "Okay, what's the next highest?" Elm Street, which is our third highest school. You know, Penachuck and Fairgrounds Middle. And then Bicentennial Elementary sort of sticks above most of the other elementary schools, and that's because it's about 600 students. As far as number of students, it's by far the largest of the schools. So, this looks okay. There are -- you can see, if you can read across the top, it shows the increases in black for each school. There are some, for example, you see Plan Operations. It's up 12%, but the amount they used is so small, it's really not that much. Okay. And then the next page, which is two-sided, is basically just the graphs in numbers. So, it shows -- it lists each of the school. We do do a calculation where we divide the number of copies divided by student population so you can get a better sense of what it is per student. We had, in last school year, 28 million black copies. You might think that's a lot, but compared to a typical school district number of students, it's lower than a lot of other school districts. But 28 million is 28 million, so it's a big number. And then the next page. This is provided by SPC, our consultant. It shows the average black copies for the last few years of various other districts. And so, what this data -- they get this data since they work with so many school districts in Maine, Vermont, and New Hampshire, that they have this data. So, they have 83,000 students. There's a total annual volume of 192 million. So, if you look at it, we're 28 million of that 192. So, we're certainly the biggest client of this company. But that gives you the average copies per student of 2291. So, if you wanted to compare that back to the previous sheet, you can get a sense to see, you know, some of the schools are doing more, some are doing less. Okay. That is that. Then if you flip over that page, you'll see the color. Now, this one, we have a little work to do. If you look at this graph, you'll see that we had a 22% increase in color copies this past school year to the previous school year. And we'll take a look at sort of where that happened in a bit. But just so everybody knows, we have, other than the high schools, we only have one color copier in each of the schools. Typically, that copier is in the office so that it's not going to be in the teacher's room to be used, maybe a little more freer. And when we set up everyone's computer, it should, if it's working correct, default to black and white when you print. So, you have to go in and make a concerted effort to go in and make a color copy. So, we do have those things in place. We did find a few computers that were printing color, but it wasn't like someone like maybe Tara who does a lot of copy, and it wasn't anybody like that. But there were a few, and we fixed those. But so, we are sort of looking into that. So, if you go to the next page, which shows you by school, you can take a look, for example, Ledge Street Elementary School. That skyrocketed. So, what we're actually doing, since this is data for last year, we get this now data we can get online, this data on a monthly basis. So, Sharon, who works in the central office, is working. I had her go through and say, "Okay, let's go take a look at how these schools are doing through the first four months of the school year." And so, we'll figure out what's happening. Now, I have a couple of ideas. I'm not going to say what they are until I confirm them. But there is one thing that happens now. With textbooks, we buy fewer and fewer textbooks. So, when you don't buy the textbooks, you basically get a sort of an online where you can print out certain pages of the textbook, so to say, or of a workbook. So, I think what might be happening at some of these schools is that they're printing these texts. So, they didn't buy the textbooks, but they're printing these pages, and they're printing them in color. But if you look, like I said, if you look at Ledge, it's gone up 77% over the previous year. It's huge. And the amount that they do compared to all the other elementary schools is significant. You know, even when you compare north and south, it's a lot higher at north than it is at south. When you compare Elm Street to some of the others. Now, a note on it, if you take a look at Charlotte Ave. Charlotte Ave had a spike the previous year. So, we sort of reached out. We figured out what was going on. They changed their practices, and now their numbers are sort of back down more where you should be. So, when we're finished with this, and I'll probably give you an update on this next month, let you know where the growth is. For example, even Title I, you can see a huge increase there. You know, I don't know why. But it's the one thing that we do with copies is that the copy expense is not sent out to the schools. It's held at a central location. And we had talked with different boards at different times about sort of giving everybody a budget. But the fear back then was, well, if you give a school a budget of, let's say, you know, $5,000, and then all of a sudden, it's March, and they're running out of money, you're really not going to prevent them from copying. Now, it might keep their eye on the ball a little better. So, it's something that might be considered when we move forward with the fiscal year '21 budget. But at this point, we're still budgeting it all at the sort of central office level. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Is there discretionary budget that the schools have, or there used to be?
Yeah, there's -- I call it the allocation. So, we do an allocation, and the average, let's say, for an elementary school is about $30,000. So, that money is -- we give them that money as part of the budget process. They decide where they spend that money. I make sure they charge it to the right place. If they're buying a computer, then it goes to the computer account. If they're buying supplies, it goes to supplies. But I don't watch over every single item that they buy. That's kind of their money to run their school.
Okay. Because being that I'm new again, and I never sat on a finance committee before, so I just kind of went over all of this, the spending, and kind of picked out the high schools. Like, you know, some of the elementary schools is almost as high as the high school. And so, let me get this straight. We don't buy very many textbooks and workbooks. So, we copy from the Internet or from the books, and we hand out these pieces of papers to the students to do all their work on it.
Some of that. We do buy, still buy, some workbooks, but we've moved away from buying just textbooks into this sort of practice, yes.
Okay. Is the rationale behind that is because the books become obsolete after a couple of years? Is it because it's too expensive? Because I remember back when I was on the board, we were doing it also with the copying. And I used to say back then to Mr. LaSalle when he was the Assistant Superintendent. I said, "You know, so we have these little pieces of paper, and these kids do their work on this piece of paper. The teacher marks it. Where does the piece of paper go after the kid finishes it? Does it go into the bag? Do they crumble it up? Do they put it in their desk, and it gets shoved?" And my question would always be at the end. So, when they need to study for a test, where do they pull that piece of paper from? Because they don't have a workbook. Chances are, it's not going into a binder. It's where is it going? And that's what my concern is. We're spending all this money, but there's nothing hard for them to take back out because it's all these papers that we're spending to copy. And is it more fiscally better to not buy any workbooks that they can work in and do all the math or reading, whatever, that they do so they have something to come back and study from? Or do we -- the paper trail, that probably has never trailed for them to study with? Thank you.
Okay. So, it is cheaper to do it this way than to buy a textbook. At the elementary levels, I think we're buying fewer textbooks. The textbooks do become obsolete quicker. This way, you can keep up to date. As far as your questions regarding what do the kids do with the papers and things like that, I'm probably not the person to answer that question. Maybe Assistant Superintendent McKinney would be better to answer that. I could guess, but I think maybe we can -- I'll bring that question back to him, and he can answer that for us.
And could I just add to this? What we did for the math program, there were certain pages that teachers weren't using. So, the ones that were most important to the teachers, they pulled them out, and we took them to a binary and had them printed in book form for teachers and save money that way. I don't think it was a 50% savings, but it was a sizable saving. So, they did get a little creative in doing that. That was the math program, right?
Yes, I believe, yes.
And they're still doing that?
Yes, I believe so.
Katie Saad got the quote, I remember.
This is more -- all this copying is more than just textbooks, though. There's exams, and there's worksheets and homework.
Oh, yes.
Right? So, there's a lot more.
Yes, certainly not just. That was -- that might be why they've increased this year versus the previous year. But a lot of the just general copying. I mean, 28 million black and white, and what do we have in color? We have 1.3 million.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a lot less in total. But yeah, I mean, we do almost 30 million copies a year. So, there's a lot of copying going on in the district.
I have another question. I've been out of teaching for six years now. But do these -- the cost of this, does it include the ink? Because I know, you know, we used to have to occasionally, they'd be buying ink. So, is this just for copying in color, and we supply the ink? Or are they supplying the ink?
This covers, if you print on one of the copiers, it covers all the ink and the toner. All that stuff is covered with that price per. If you have a smaller copier, like an HP, like you might have at home, if you have one of those in your building, that's not included in this. This is just all the copier machines, and we have some, what I call sort of a high-speed printers that are part of this contract. So, those, all those costs are covered. So, there's no extra cost for maintenance. There's no extra cost for toner, any of that. That's all covered by this, unless you use an HP. And I have tried to limit the amount of HPs, but it's amazing. Everyone seems to want to have a printer in their office. And I just, I tell them, "Then if you want to bring it in, you hook it up just to your desktop, and you pay for the cartridges, then go ahead." But I'm trying to prevent the schools, because the cartridges, if you have an HP in your building somewhere, the cartridges are paid for by those school allocation funds that Ms. Johnson had mentioned, asked about earlier. So, I'm trying to limit that because, A, that's much more expensive per copy than doing it this way. But it's a struggle. You know? It really is.
Now, you said all schools have one color copier. Does that mean libraries do not have them? I know libraries used to have.
They don't. A lot of them have a copier, but they don't. I don't know about the two high schools. The high schools have more than one color copier, but all the elementary schools have one color copier, and it's not in the library. It's in the office.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Any more questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Okay. So, yes, so we just popped ahead, and as I said, there's 1.337 of the color copies in total. And you can see, like I said, for example, Ledge Street, 386 copies per student, which is way above what everyone else is. So, we'll do a little more, and I'll get back to you with what some of the exceptions are next month. Okay. The next page, quickly in that, is here is all the machines that are part of this contract. So, there's 123 total units. 93 of them are leased. 30 of them we own. And we have this lease, and we pay $97,000 a year. That covers the cost of the equipment of buying the copiers. But since we buy them in bulk and we bid out with other school districts at the same time, for example, the cost of a new high-speed copier might be about $35,000. When we do it this way, we end up paying about $7,000 or $8,000 per copier. So, we get a very good deal on the price of the copier. And the copier companies are more than willing. They want their copiers in your school, where every time that click goes, they get their third of a cent, or they get their five cents. That's how they get their money back. So, the business has kind of changed. But if you were just a single proprietor, and you wanted to buy a copy machine, they're not going to give you a great discount, and you're going to pay a lot closer to list So, that's kind of how the process works. And then the last sheet, I won't go through all the --
I'm sorry. Ms. Johnson has a question.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Yeah, on the lease. Do we get new copiers every year, or how long do these copiers for?
Well, no. We get, this is a six-year lease. This August will be the fifth year to pay on that, so there's one more. We are potentially looking out to do a new lease this summer and then bring in that last year to it so we can get some newer machines. But we do have, since we do, all our copiers are from the same company, Conica Minolta. We meet with them every summer. If there are machines out there that just are not behaving well at all, we do get to trade in and out. Now, keep in mind, these are the older machines. When we did this lease five years ago, we couldn't afford all brand-new. For $97,000 a year, we couldn't afford all brand-new. So, we have some new and some used. Some of those used have really struggled. So, over the last three summers, we've traded out probably about 15 or 16 of, well, we've taken out the old one and brought in another used one. So, when we go through this process later on this spring, we'll take a look and say, "Okay." Because if you want all new ones, you can get all new ones. But it's not going to be at $97,000 a year. It's going to be higher than that. So, we'll go through the process. We'll see what it is. This is the sec -- this will be the third time we've done this. The first time we did it, we had some money left at the end of the year. We used that as a down payment. It was about $250,000. So, then we could get for about $97,000 a year, we had all new machines. But when we did this five years ago, we had like no money left at the end of the year.
So, if we have machines that aren't working as well, do we swap it around to the lower?
Yes.
And, you know, the schools that aren't copying as much, the lower-volume schools?
Yes. We look at all the locations, because we have a, there's a book that I didn't bring with me, but if you'd like to see it sometime, let me know. And it lists each machine at each school, how many copies they've done. And each year, when SPC provides this report, they'll go through and say, "Okay, you should probably take this machine and move it to a lower-volume location and move this one up."
And what's our interest rate on that? Because it's Norway Savings Bank, so.
It, I don't know off the top of my head, but it was pretty low.
Pretty low?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino, do you have a question?
I'm fine, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. So, then just the last sheet is all the details comparing color from last year to color of this year, and the same for black and white. So, just a comparison, school by school. I won't go through all that detail. I won't fall asleep. Okay?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is a credit card report. This goes back to when Mr. Ryder was on the board. And there were a few issues with school districts in the area having some credit card issues. So, for the new people, basically, a policy was put together. At each quarter, we put together a credit card report which shows where the credit card spending is going. We have two credit cards in the district. One is in my name. One is in Derek Danielson's, my assistant's name. We keep them locked up in the safe so we don't carry them around. Use them only when we really need to. So, the types of things, if you take a look here, you can see of the spent through November, about $39.8 million. 50% of that, or 20 million, was spent on advertising. This is mostly advertising for positions. In today's world, you used to put the ad in the paper. You don't really do that anymore.
A million or 20,000?
No, thousands. Oh, 20,000, sorry. If I said million.
Some people watching might have just had a heart attack. It was 20,000, okay.
Yes. We'd be in big trouble if that were the case. Thanks for catching that. So, a lot of the employment advertising now is all done online, Indeed, and those sorts of sites. And when you work with sites like that, you really are required to use a credit card. Other than that, another 33% is travel and conferences and seminars. And as you'd expect, if you're going to take a plane flight, or if you're going to book a hotel, you need to use a credit card. People are free to use their own credit card for these types of things. So, the numbers would be higher than this if it was all the company card. But some of the people don't want to use their card, don't have a card, whatever the situation may be. So, we will help them out with that, and then when they send in their expense report, we'll clear everything up. And I guess just the other thing, you'll notice sort of the dues and memberships. There was this $45 a pop, and then we decided to, that was for a thing called MailChimp that Stacy Hines, our communications director, uses. It's a way to communicate information back and forth. So, that's the report. Three months from now, we'll do another one, and maybe what I'll do is compare the full year to the previous full year. But I think what you're going to find is it's, this spending is pretty steady. It's the same types of things. It's advertising. It's travel and conferences and seminars. That's pretty much what it's used for.
Any questions? I have one question. Did they discontinue the use of MailChimp?
No. If you look, see it May, how it says 545? They sort of paid an annual multi-months.
Okay. Looks like they paid it per year?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is the financial report. Because we have a new member, I'll go through this in a little more detail than I will every month. We do have the financial report. Typically, on a monthly basis, I'll pick out the highlights. When we get to sort of April or May, I will start to bring a forecast where I'm going to forecast where I think we're going to be. So, instead of sort of, it's in the same format as this report is. So, we'll spend more time on the forecast than we will on the actual report. But by doing the forecast, we're actually reviewing this. So, there are two versions of this report. And we'll go through the first one. When you flip the cover, you'll see, this is a month-by-month one. So, we'll go through this first. And the other one is pretty much, it has the same information. It just doesn't have the detail monthly. It has numbers, it has the budget numbers, whereas the monthly one doesn't have budget numbers. It's got what's left in the budget. It's got what, it has what is used, but it doesn't have the actual budget numbers. But other than that, there are a lot of the same things. So, we'll start with the salaries and wages on the first page there. Typically, what I do when I look at percent used in total, if you flip to page four, you'll see that we're 40, at the bottom, 43.03% used. So, if you look at that and you say, "Okay, the fiscal year," December means we're six months through the fiscal year. The school year, we're four months through the 10-month school year. So, 50%, 40%, and the total is 43%. So, that tells you that you're, in total, you're in the ballpark. If that number were 54%, it would be like, you know, "What's going on?" If it was much lower than that, you'd wonder what's going on. Okay. So, back to the top there, salaries and wages. When you take a look, this is obviously where most of the money is budgeted. We take a look, and you can see wages full-time, July, it's only $994,000, but that's because you're not paying any of the teachers or school year staff. In the month of August, the school year staff, teachers, had one pay in there, so it was $3.7 million. Since then, you can see it's $6.3, $6.7, $6.6, and $6.3. The ones that are $6.3 million, that says that there were two biweekly pays and four weekly pays. The October, that's $6.7, which is slightly higher, that's two biweekly pays and five weekly pays. So, the people that get paid weekly had one extra one in that month. And in November, there was just four and two, but we had the retro that we paid on the ASME contract. So, that was three and a half years of retro. So, that all hit in November. So, that's why that number is 6.6 as opposed to the 6.3 number. And then you can see the sort of the wages part-time kind of follow the same flow of the full-time ones. Overtime, basically what you have in overtime, most of the overtime is created by the maintenance and the custodians and the -- by the maintenance and the custodians and the, the people working out in the plow trucks, et cetera. That's where most of that comes from. I'd say probably the schools have maybe about $3,000 to $4,000 a month of overtime. Most of it is coming from those groups. Now, some of that, for example, we pay overtime for biddy basketball. Then at the end of each month, we're going to turn around and bill Park and Rec, because the biddy basketball overtime is in the Park and Rec budget. So you'll, you'll, some of those numbers will, in effect, be reduced as we, as we make those transfers. Now, wages per diem, what that is, is, that is the work being done, no, that's the substitutes. It's the substitutes coming in and getting paid a daily rate, filling in for a teacher or a parent. It's also the continuing subs, where if a teacher's going to be out for, let's say, six, eight weeks, then they get a, a full-time sub. The cost of that sub is also in there. So you can see, obviously, in July, there's not much of a need for subs. And in August, and then it, September, probably a little less, then it starts creeping up. October was quite high this year, November. And then December's a little less, because we had the vacation weeks. So those numbers, you'll, you'll see those numbers, you know, January will be high, March is probably going to be the highest. Then there's elected officials, which you know what that is. Additional hours, you notice the, the costs early on are high. That's because of summer school. Additional hours is people currently working for us that do work above and beyond their contract. When teachers work above and beyond their contract, as to be on committees and things, they typically get $25 an hour. So those kind of costs are in, but the big numbers are the costs that we pay our staff that do summer school. Stipends, you can see, is typically around $5,000 or so a month. And then in, in November, it popped up, that was the stipends for the middle-school athletic coaches. And in December, it was the high-school athletic coaches for the fall. We pay the coaches at the end of the, end of the period. So you'll see the same thing every three months going forward. The December payment to the, there's more coaches in the fall than there are in the winter and the spring. So it's not going to be that high every month, every, every quarter, I mean. Okay, retirement and separation pay, you can see that we've spent $661,000. The good news is, all the teachers that were on the list, if you're a teacher and you want to get your severance pay, you need to put a letter in by February 1st of each year. All those teachers have now been paid their severance. So the only, the only charges that you're going to see going forward is if people leave. If people leave and they have accrued vacation time, then you have to pay them the vacation time. But we have $138,000 left in that account, so I think that's going to be fine unless, you know, during the school year, a bunch of people happen to leave, and that's rare. Okay, the next set of accounts, fringe benefits, those first three items, those are all, they're in our budget. They're costs, they're our costs of our employees. But they're, they're generated by the city, and they're put into our budget. If we overspend on these lines, the city will make up the difference. If we underspend, the city will take that, take back the difference. So it's, it's a good way to show that here's the costs of your benefits, but there isn't a penalty or a benefit of being above and/or below on those accounts. Okay, professional and technical services, you can see, the, the accounting and auditing services, that's an audit that's done each year of the student activity accounts. You'll, you'll get a copy of that, probably. It usually shows up in around April or so. And that's pretty much what that, the only cost that's in that account. Legal services, most of that is, we have a retainer with Attorney Clausen. And then occasionally, we'll have costs for special ed. We reach out occasionally to attorneys to help us with special ed situations. Medical costs, we have a, a eye doctor, and we have a physician, who, the physician is sort of the expert for the nurses. If they have questions, they can reach out. That's a retainer. And the same with the eye doctor, they do a review of, I think it's the third graders. That's about, that's 2,500 for the year. Okay, the instruction services, that's the youth council. They provide services to suspended students. You'll notice in November that there was a small amount, that invoice didn't get put in until the following month. So we're fine there. Pupil support services, the next one, those, for the most part, what those are is the OT and PT, the occupational therapy and the physical therapy costs for the special ed students. We have contracts with two firms. The people have been working in our school for years. And that's pretty much what most of that is. Contracted services, those are either items from the IT department, or they're items from plant operations, they could be from schools, any sort of contracted service. It's a very general thing. But if you take a look, most of the, the early ones in August were the IT-related ones. We pay those in advance.
Any questions at this point? Nope, okay.
Okay, property services, starts off with the utilities. Basically, the electricity is running a little bit lower than last year, about $50,000 less at this point in time than it was last year. So that's good news. Heating gas, about 75% of the heating gas costs are going to show up between January and April. So you get, obviously, that's when the, the heating bill for December shows up in January, January and February, et cetera. So it's typically, you can see that it, it popped up in December a bit, that with the November cost. So it's, it's sort of one month behind. But you'll, you'll start to see, we'll see how that account works. By the end of April, we'll pretty much know if there's going to be excess in that or not. We have been lucky enough the last couple of years to have some excess there. Water's pretty straightforward. We're sort of on line where we were last year. And that's been pretty steady. That's pretty much what, what you'll see, about 100, you know, 50,000 or so for the year. And then the next set of accounts, HVAC maintenance, building grounds, those, those are managed by plant operations. The HVAC maintenance are mostly agreements that we have with two or three different vendors that come in and take care of our HVAC equipment. So we, pretty much, we, we have an agreement, an annual agreement, and then if there's issues, they'll come in and fix things. And they do come in and do inspections and things like that.
God bless you.
Excuse me, thank you.
Then we have, as we talked earlier about the copiers, the way we pay is, we pay once in the beginning of the year. You can see in August, the $87,000. We have another bill that will probably be in next month. So we sort of, those are based upon what we spent last year. And if we spend less this year or more this year, at the very end of the year, we'll get either credit, or we'll get, we'll get a, another bill. And then we go down, nothing else is too crazy there. There is an error in the report that has been fixed. If you look at equipment repairs and maintenance, if you look under encumbered, committed, which is three from the, from the right, you see a $521,000 number, which leaves you a minus 455. That was an error on a, on a requisition that was put in and then reversed. It should have been like 5,000. Someone put a couple of extra zeros on it. So we caught that, we fixed it. But when the report was run, it, it hadn't been corrected. So I did run another report a couple of days ago, and it's fine. Okay, other services, we have the telephone. That, we had hoped that with the new phone system, the cost would go down. It really hasn't. So we're doing a little research now with IT to see if we can get that cost down going forward. But it's running a little bit less than last year, but it's still probably, potentially could be over what we have budgeted.
Can I, can I ask about that? We've been looking at this for a long time, studying it. Who, who is the one troubleshooting? Is the telephone company responsible for some of this?
No, it's not the telephone company. I think it's, I think it, it's incumbent upon us, I mean, it's kind of an IT thing, for us to, to look at the bills and say, okay, which lines are no longer necessary. And, and I don't think we've done that. I think it, and I think I might have mentioned this last time, is maybe we need to, if, if they're not, I don't know if they're capable or ready to do it, I need to discuss it more with them. But there are services out there where they'll go through and go through with a fine-toothed comb, they'll keep a percentage of the savings, and then going forward, you should be okay. So that's a possibility. The skill set to go through all these phone things, it's quite difficult to find out. So, like I said, we'll, we'll look into that. But we're still, they still don't have a director of IT yet, you know.
Yeah, I know, that's been tough. But this has been a problem for a while, when we thought we were going to save money.
Yes.
What percentage would this company take? Do you have any idea?
Um, you can negotiate it, but, I mean, a lot of them will ask for 50% of the savings. Sometimes you can get them down to 25 to 30% of the savings. I guess it depends on what they think the savings are.
Okay.
You know, if it's a small amount, they're, they're not going to do it. But if it's a larger amount, then they might be willing to do it for a lower percentage.
So do we have a timeline? If it's not done by this, we're going to look at a firm to do this?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, we need to do it in the next few months.
Okay.
Make a decision in the next few months.
Okay, thank you. Paula?
Thank you. So this dealing with landline phones, is this what this is? The landlines that we still use?
Yeah, we have, all our phones, our phone system now is all voice-over IP, so it's all, but a lot, we still have a lot of what was, this is how it was explained to me, because I'm not a phone expert either. But a lot of the, the so-called copper lines, when we went to voice-over IP, we were going to keep some of the copper lines for redundancy, in case the network goes down, you still want to have some phones. But I think we have a lot, my understanding is we have a lot of copper lines that we don't necessarily need. Maybe we had seven at a school, we only need two now. So I think that's where the, that's how it was explained to me, where the savings would come when the new system was put in.
So it's almost like a duplication?
Exactly.
Okay, because, okay, so with the schools, we still need to have those phones wired in, so in case some versus cellphones, because if selfie, if you don't charge your cellphone, it goes down also, you know?
Yes.
There's always a glitch here with one of the phones, okay.
And for 911 reasons and things like that, you're still, for safety.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, the rest of the accounts in this column, till you get towards the end, all relatively small spend accounts, things like travel mileage reimbursements, printing, postage and delivery, they all pretty much take care of themselves. They're all managed, you know, each school has a little bit of each of those budgets, so we don't typically have any issues there. The only account that occasionally does go over is advertising, and, you know, that depends on how much is required to be done. So then you look down towards the bottom, and you'll see there's the transportation, the two transportation accounts. One is regular transportation, one special ed transportation. Those two, you'll notice that the bills for December didn't get in. Those are just a couple of small amounts. Most, the cost for most of this comes from first student, who's our, our provider. So, like I said, I keep a good eye on this. We'll take, we'll take a look with the forecast as we get on. Last year, we were pretty much right on line with the budget. Because it's, with the contract, it's easy to manage what the first student costs are going to be. Where we end up with some difficulty is with the out-of-district students, transporting some of them. For example, there was a, a student that was taken out of their home and put in a foster home. That foster home is in Concord, New Hampshire. So we're required to get something up there and bring that kid back and forth until they've figured out the situation. It's hard to do. And to be honest with you, there's fewer and fewer of these smaller buses. The sort of the vans that you see drive around, that's typically what we use. So we'll reach out, but sometimes it may take a, a week or two before we can find a, a ride for that student.
Thank you. What about court-ordered placements? Is that included in this out-of-district?
Any, well, the out-of-district itself, the out-of-district is the tuition, yes. That's always going to, that is all, all costs for out-of-district students. We have about 100 out-of-district students. This is the line item that has been going up and up and up. The costs, for example, there's a school in Chelmsford, Mass., where we send about 17 students. The cost per student went up about $15,000 this year, per student. And we have 17 there. So the, it, it's a difficult thing. Once the student is out of the district, it's very difficult to bring them back. And the, these out-of-district placements, there's not a lot of control on, they, they do need to reach out to the state. For example, the Mass., they got to reach out to Mass. and say, we need, but they, they give what they consider is good reasons for this, and it gets approved by the state, and then the rates go up.
I remember when I was on the board with Mr. Conrad back then, I had talked with him and Mr. Giuliano at a board meeting about a collaborative school to try to bring the kids back, and then open up for tuition for other districts to start paying Nashua and try to house the kids here. I don't think Mr. Giuliano understood. He said, we can't do this for profit. I said, we're not looking for profit. We're looking to try to keep our students here and bring other people, so it'll become cost-effective towards Nashua. And that kind of never went anyplace. But, I mean, I think we need to, if our, our special ed needs are going to grow, and we have to keep putting more and more students out of district, I think we, as a community in a school district, need to take a look, what's beneficial for these children, what's beneficial for the taxpayers, and how can we bring the costs down somewhat? Because as we go on, you know, nothing, no costs ever go down. As I just said, Chelmsford charged more for the 17 students, the cost rises. So I think that's something that can be, you know, looked at a little bit. We need to take a look on, how do we keep our students here in the district? And I'm very curious what's going to happen with the middle school, because I've asked the questions, okay, we're going to house them, we're going to try to bring them back into the middle school, but what's going to happen with the elementary and the high school? We're only talking about one piece of the puzzle. You've got to look at that puzzle as a whole, because you can't chop them up, and you don't want to take kids out from a placement, bring them back, and then they're going to have to go back out again, because it's not going to be conducive to the child.
Yes. Now, we have done a couple of things. I mean, the Brentwood School that we have, we do take students from other districts in there, and we're keeping them in, in this Brentwood program. So it's a lot cheaper doing that than it is to send those students out. And with the new middle school that we're going to be building, we will have sort of a special ed wing for the middle-school kids. Now, the reality is, about the, let's say there's the 100 kids that are out of district, most of those kids are high-school kids. We could, it's easier to manage them when they're younger. If we can get this middle-school program up and running with the new space at the new school, we can hopefully keep the middle-school kids, more middle-school kids here. But most of our out-of-district kids that have the significant costs, they're high-school-aged kids. But that's, that's another thing. And you mentioned, you know, the collaboratives. In Mass., they have collaboratives, where these towns get together and do what you said. They all donate a certain amount of money each year, and if they don't spend it all, they get it back. And New Hampshire doesn't do it. I mean, it, it's kind of hard to do by yourself. We have looked at things, and we'll continue to look at those. But if you could somehow tie in with Manchester and Merrimack and something like that, then that might be a possibility.
I have, I have a question on the laundry and cleaning services. All those zeros, how do the uniforms get cleaned? Do the kids take them home to clean them?
I think I, I asked Lisa the question. They do take them home and clean them until the end of the year. And then at the end of the year, they pass them back in, and we clean them here.
Okay. Well, we have a washer, a big washer and dryer, okay.
Yes, yes. That's what, that's what the equipment manager does. But I think someone, we were buying some, I don't know, chair uniforms or something, and someone said, no, that you give the student, the cheer, cheerleader, the uniform, and they wash it during the season, until it's over, yeah.
That used to be a big line, I can remember, years ago.
Okay, so then we flip over to page three, and you can see sup- Okay, so and then we flip over to page three, and you can see supplies and materials. Now, basically, the beginning part of this is most of that, most of those line items are the educational supplies, medical supplies, miscellaneous supplies. Those are all sort of money spent from the school's allocations. So that's what the schools are spending on those things. And then you'll see the plant ops lines, the supplies, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, janitorial, grounds maintenance, all those are managed well by the plant operations department. They do a good job. They haven't run over. I've been here 10 years now, they've never run over, so they keep, keep good track of all those. And then towards the bottom, you can see where the publications, media, periodicals, subscriptions, books, that's typically the curriculum stuff. Some of that is libraries in specific schools, and some of that is curriculum materials purchased by the central office curriculum teams. But those are, at this point, there's not a huge amount of spend there. Okay, the next sign, it says other expenses, indirect costs. You'll notice those are credits. When we have a federal grant, we get to take a percentage of each federal grant, and it comes back to the district as a revenue. So we budget about $210,000 each year. We've already, through December, had $132,000 of that, so we should be in good shape there. And then 71, you have the equipment accounts, computer equipment, computer software. Computer software, you can see in the summer, large amounts, but that's typically the subscriptions, the software subscriptions you pay for the, at the beginning of the year. And then you use the software throughout the year. Furniture and fixtures is usually, you'll see more spending on that at the, at the end of the year. And then on page four, you'll see the debt service, capital lease, what that is, that's the copier lease that we talked about before, the $97,000 there. And there's actually, it's $100,000 now, because there is one other lease for $3,000, so it's, it's 100. And then budget adjustments, what you'll see there is, one's obvious, if the mayor's going to make an adjustment to the budget, that's where that would go, but you'll only see that at the, at the end of the budget process. And the expense transfers to other funds, those are both revenue items. It's the facility rentals. We rent out our facilities to outside parties, and they pay us those funds. They get built up in a different account, and then we transfer them in June to this account. And then there's the, also in there, and we do it the same way, where we, we collect it in a different account and transfer it, it's the sports fees paid by the students to play sports. So you'll see, those credits will come through later in the year. So that's it. Any questions?
That million dollars that we got, that we voted on last week?
Yes.
And $693,658. I'm just, was this presented to the board prior to us accepting it at the first meeting? This money coming in from the state, from the resolution?
The, it was discussed, I think in November.
Okay.
And then there was a discussion with us and the city deciding where the 2.9 million was going. And then the Board of Alderman, since it was at their level, they voted to break it up, a million to the middle school, a million back to us to make the decision, and then the $900,000, which went to the, to the benefits. So that was really their purview, and then the million was given to us. We had talked about ways to spend it, but we didn't know exactly how much we were going to get. But I think we had talked about, the $693, that amount had been talked about for months at the board level.
So the prior board knew about this? They had discussed if the money came in, how it wanted, how they wanted somewhat to be appropriated into any accounts? Because I'm just wondering if this should have been like, you know, discussed in the committee where we just put it through? And I figured, maybe I was wrong, and if I was wrong, I admit to it, I haven't been on the board for a while, to have discussed the appropriations of this money, or we were allowed just to accept it because it was money coming into us, and it wasn't something that we were transferring from line item to line item, or making a new expenditure out of it.
Yeah.
So that's what I was kind of curious about.
Thank, thank you. We had discussed those expenditures, but we didn't really discuss, because we didn't know the money was coming in.
Right.
So obviously, we didn't, we didn't discuss using that money for those expenditures, but we, we had, that Fuentes and Pennell program was in committee. And it was put off to a other budget, a future budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it was, it was actually the Fuentes and Mattel, those materials, I think they were approved by the board in committee and curriculum, like in May of last year.
Right, right. And we had to put off a big chunk of it because it wasn't in...
There wasn't enough money in the budget.
Wasn't enough money in the existing budget, so it was put off to a future budget. But, but the previous board was fully aware of the expenditures, but the money that was coming in, we weren't aware of, because we didn't, you know, it hadn't happened yet.
Yes, yes.
But can I say, we couldn't, we couldn't use it for salaries. We had, we couldn't use any of that money to carry over into other budgets. We had to spend it because there's no guarantee we're going to get that again. So we had to buy things that were not going to be carried over into next year's budget.
I understand that, because if, right, you, the money came in, it was appropriated right now, and you had to make it to good use. And this is what I just wanted to find out, if the previous board had talked about the reading program, so if money did come in, and this is what, if you had the money, and this is what you wanted, if money didn't come in, this is what you were planning on doing for the coming year. But this is, it had been discussed.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I needed to know, that this program had been discussed. And I wanted just to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
It was discussed and approved.
Yeah, and they did a whole pilot program. The teachers did a pilot program like a year or two, two years ago. And they'd, so, yes, that was all, all discussed. Any other questions on that? Okay, so just one more item, and this will be a quick one. For transfer report, each, each month, you're going to see a transfer report. Basically, an entry that's over $5,000 needs to be approved by the board. An entry that's over $1,000, less than $5,000, we bring to the board so that the board can see the transfer. It doesn't require approval per se, but we do sort of give it for informational purposes. You don't need to approve each and every entry. You can simply approve the transfer report for the month of December. That's typically the, the motion that this committee makes, and then, and it's, then it's really put in the consent agenda, unless, of course, someone would like to, you know, bring up a specific entry. So I'll just run through these quickly. The first one is the special ed department. They had money in supplies, and they decided to use a new assessment tool in the preschool part of their program, so they moved the money from supplies to testing. So it's, it's their money, they just put it to the right account. National athletics, they had money in transportation, and there was excess money in transportation, at least they expect there to be, and they had to move it to cover the increase, it was a $2,300 increase in the rental coverage for the, for the swim team. We use the Boys and Girls Club for the swimming pool. The next one is Ledgestreet School. And really, all this is, is moving it from the guidance part of the Ledgestreet School to the sort of shared instructional, which is an account for everyone in the school. So that's really all that's doing. That's, once again, their money, they're just changing programs. And then the next one is a district office entry. I made this entry. I took $4,100 out of the heating, because that's one of the few areas where I knew I had it, and we're moving forward. We, this goes back to, we have AEDs in all our schools. Most of these have been donated over years. Many of them are over 10 or 11 years old. With an AED, you need to check the pads, and you need to check the batteries. Those will tend to go on the AED. We have historically had the nurse at each school be responsible for that work. And, and I think over the years, different nurses, different people checking things. Sometimes people would buy the cheaper battery instead of the battery that went with that specific device. Sometimes that caused some problems. The, some of the pads maybe weren't checked the right way. So what we decided to do is we had a firm come in, they're going to come in and give us a real good once-over of all our machines, let us know what the useful life left is going to be, straighten out any issues with pads, straighten out any issues with batteries, sort of like we do, if you think about, we do that with fire extinguishers, right? We have a company come in, and they do a fire extinguisher test, and if something's not working, we'll replace it. So this is to do this this year, so that we can all get on the same page, we can get a good sense of, okay, what's left, how long are these going to last? And if need be, we do, we did put some money in, in the fiscal year '21 budget, which has yet to be approved, but when you see it, it's in there. I think it's about $8,000, in case we need to purchase some more AEDs. I think, you know, we have them, I think it's worth keeping them. You know, if you can save one life, it's, it's worth it. So that's the process we decided to do, instead of trying to get someone internally to go around and do it. We have, we have probably seven or eight different models, so it's really kind of hard. This company knows how to deal with all of them. So when the report's done, I can probably bring it to this committee and let you know. And, and we'll go from there. So that's what that transfer was for.
Any questions? Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we want to, do we want to do a transfer report first?
I'm sorry, I take that back.
That's okay.
Motion to accept the report.
Just, just approve it.
I'll second.
I should have you do this year much faster. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Asked unanimously. Now we can have them.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the meeting's adjourned at 7:37.